All right, we're going to go ahead and get started. Well, we appreciate your coming out. This is our number three of three, and so feel free to adjust. We're borrowing Mike Womack's presentation. Those of you that were here February 2nd, 2020, that was one of Mike's early presentations, and this is the two years later with all the changes presentation. And so just to give history, not assuming everybody knows everything, so there's a couple of pieces, just want to lay the foundation. February 2nd, 2020, at St. Luke's, we started the conversation, Chris Hancock as one of our General Conference delegates, and I did utilize Mike's base information and did a congregational conversation and a straw poll, and we've been in a waiting posture because we're waiting for protocol separation, and there was no reason, and we thought it was going to happen in May 2020, COVID hit a month after we did our presentation, and so we've been in a waiting posture. About a month and a half ago, as we will share a little later, things changed, and so when we brought it to our church council, we felt that we needed to come back, not only to catch you up to speed, but because there are some potential timeframe implications regarding that, we needed to do it with as much information. And there was a period of time for about three to four weeks that literally the information was changing on a daily basis. And so we chose not to go right away, and it's still shifting, but this is pretty set information, and we wanted to engage the information. So technically, this is a town hall for St. Luke's par. Some of their members were in Florida for a month, and when they got back, I said, well, guess what happened the month that you were gone? Pastor Brian left, and the General Conference has been kicked down the road, and we need to bring you up to speed while two, four of them had visited, had worshipped at a church in Florida. And they go, yeah, we've been hearing about it, and said, let me bring you up to speed. And so at the request of par's leadership, they said, hey, can we come and be caught up to speed? So when we do the straw poll, those are the two churches that have officially asked to gather information. It's not secret, anybody can be a part of this, but those are the two churches where we're officially gathering data so that the leadership can make an informed decision. So the other piece that is helpful, you need to be able to state your bias, and if you don't think you have a bias, you're uninformed, because we all have biases. And so I want to tell you our working bias. And so we're coming from a traditionalist standpoint. We really felt that, and we saw that coming out of the presentation in 2020. The other piece that you also need to know, a role that I have been serving in for the last couple of years is I'm president of the Wesley Covenant Association for Indiana. And so we're working hard to give you the best unbiased, pure information, but it is coming from a traditionalist standpoint. Mike Womack is a layperson in Greenwood, and he's the vice chair for the Indiana chapter. And so we are coming from, and we're going to go through terms a little bit later, when we think about our big tent, conservative now is called traditionalist, and so we'll revisit that as we did two years ago. But we also, when we're talking about where some of the progressives, we're not saying, here's where they are, we're going to hear their words. And so we intentionally use their words to help understand where those things are. And then again, we just want to make sure that you, not only are we bringing you up to speed, but we're also seeking information Sunday afternoon, this afternoon at 1:00, and then tonight, and then tomorrow, St. Luke's leadership team will be meeting to prayerfully discern as to timeframe and questions and requests for some of those things. So I don't mean to be coy, we're going to cover a lot of that. I just wanted to kind of lay a foundation for where we are. And so some people have said, well, it would have been nice to have different fonts and different color schemes. Well, this Mike's, and we didn't rebuild them. And so feel free to adjust yourself. If you want any information, we'll send you a PDF, we'll send you the PowerPoint. And then there's also later into the presentation, if you want to do a deep dive and read everybody, which Mike has done, go to Chris Ritter's People Need Jesus website, and every article that has ever been written, and I think including some of Riley's, are on that because it's a U M compendium. And so if you really, really, really want to do a deep dive, what we shared in the e-news is just touching the surface, but we felt that it was enough to get a handle to come into this meeting and not be like, what? And the thing is, too, this congregation, particularly at St. Luke's, we have been in this conversation because pastors like Riley and Phil Granger and John Walls, Mike Dominic, Mitch Norwood was here in 2016 and 2019 with General Conference. So this congregation particularly has been a part of the larger conversations and been praying. And so a lot of this is not fully new, and we'll have some question and answer at the end. And so we're going to work to be as exhaustive as we can and still keep it within about an hour, 45 minutes. And just because it could be long, but there's so much, but we don't think we have to, so we're trying to run that balance. So let's bow for a moment of prayer, and then John, as our church council chair, and I will walk us through the information. God, we thank you that this is your church, and all of this stuff has not gotten by you. We seek to be faithful to your church, and in this moment in time, we seek to steward this gift of the local congregations. So give us wisdom, give us insight. Holy Spirit, speak to our hearts, help us understand as we walk through, as we, as a congregation, leadership and peoples discern what our next step, that we would have to continue to be the church you called into existence in the 1800s, that you called into existence in that moment that we remember even this week, called Holy Week. And so, Lord, be with our time tonight. We want you to be honored and glorified in Jesus' name. Amen.
Yeah, I'd also like to welcome you all, and thanks for coming out, and we'll try to get through the information in fairly short order, and there will be time for question and answers at the end. The main thing we just wanted to communicate upfront here is the fact that this is Mike's presentation. You heard a little bit about Mike. One other interesting piece of information is he can trace his Methodist roots back over 200 years to when his great-great-grandmother was baptized. So he is a traditional, well-versed Methodist, and he brought this information to us to get us up to date on what's going on. Some people may not be very familiar, and if this is some of your first exposure to some of the information, we apologize, some of it is a little sad, and in a way, you have to go through a mourning process when you realize that the church that you knew isn't the church going forward. And Mike said he'd been going through it for about three years, and he's been through the stages of denial and anger, and he's working through the rest of them. So this is the actual slide from 2020 when we got together, and I just wanted to point the similarities, although the title at the time was the Proposed Split of the U M C, what is absolutely the same as the stated subtitle there, what every congregation and every member needs to know. So this is very much to keep you up to date and current, and that's why the stated intent there of covering the current situation and possible future impacts, that's still consistent, too. And Scott already spoke to the traditionalist perspective from which this is being presented. The first page of this presentation has looked like this for a couple of years, but as of a few weeks ago, now the first page looks like that. The changes are not just coming, the changes are here. And so a quick review of what we covered before and what's happened since the last town hall. And this is part of our version of, tell them what you're going to tell them, tell them what you're telling them, and then tell them what you told them. So you could see that this will kind of set up some of the rest of what's coming. But let's go ahead and start with what we did review in 2020. We reviewed the history of the United Methodist Church, not all the way from John Wesley, but from 1968, and some of the impacts of the way we've been put together and the way we've worked with each other since then, the then-current situation and the conclusions at that point in time. We also introduced and explained the protocol for what I call amicable separation. It's actually got a longer seven or eight-word title. But that was the whole idea behind it. There was a mechanism put in place, agreed upon by all different parties that said, let's go ahead and work our splits this way. So some of today's presentation will be review. You can't really go forward without going back to some of that basis. At the end of that particular session, we also took a straw poll, and at least for St. Luke's, most people identified as more traditionalist. Then, of course, we know what happened. This COVID hit about March 2020, and we had all the impacts from that. But more than that, in the meantime, what's been going on? Well, the General Conference that was supposed to occur in 2020, which was supposed to be a point that now we can come together after the General Conference of, the Special General Conference of 2019, and get some of these things actually resolved, that's been postponed twice. The Wesley Covenant Association, who had been functioning as a life raft, began functioning as a midwife. In other words, that their focus now was on bringing forward a new denomination, not being the denomination, but being someone to help that come into place. And the Global Methodist Church adopted a name, Global Methodist Church, and formed a transitional committee to begin to function to represent that future denomination. But here's where it started becoming, changes are here now. In February of 2022 is when we had our hopes for the General Conference that was going to resolve everything in short order. That was pushed out another couple of years. In March, the General, the Global Methodist Church announced that it was going to pull up its planned start date to the 1st of May of 2020, and that transitional committee began to work with and encourage bishops across the land to work from the perspective of a comedy agreement to allow churches to transition from the U M C to the G M C. And we'll talk a lot more about this in the future, but the comedy agreement, that board, I'm sorry, that Book of Discipline paragraph is 2548.2, so you'll see that come by again. Not sure why we went back, but we'll see if we can get caught up here. There we go. The bishop here in Indiana and his cabinet are, at this point in time, indicating that even though that's the preferred method that the Global Methodist Church would like to go, they're only recognizing at this point in time, the Book of Discipline paragraph 2553, which is a separation by disaffiliation. The issue with 2553 is it's only valid until the end of 2023. So on December 31st, 2023, that officially sunsets. Now, one thing I'm happy to be able to report is, at this point in time, the bishop, the Indiana conference, we're seeing good cooperation, good servants' heart-type gracious activity towards people that are interested in finding out more, which is what we in this congregation have gone forth and asked, what are our numbers? What would it look like if we were to go ahead and disaffiliate? And they turned it around in just a couple of days with no major arguments. So with all this going on, our church council here at St. Luke's decided it was time to have these town hall meetings, and here we are. So that's kind of what to expect and where we're going. There will be a time for questions and answers at the end, and for the sake of getting to that point in a timely manner, we request that you please try to be patient and hold your questions for the end. Over time, this is what the picture has kind of evolved into, the like-minded pastors and laity of various congregations and different mindsets have converged into three predominant groups, what we call the traditionalists. In the past, you may have heard some other terms for them, the centrist and the progressives group. And we'll be doing some comparing and contrasting, and mostly the comparing and contrasting we're going to do is traditionalists versus others. And the reason for that is traditionally centrists and progressives vote identically, or at least close enough that there's not enough difference to make a lot of distinction between them and try to drive a three-way differentiation. But all of these groups each have advocacy groups behind them, working with them, some of those you've heard of, the Confessing Movement, the Wesley and Covenant Association, as we've mentioned a couple of times, Good News Magazine, those are all conservative or traditionalist groups. Some of the ones that are also listed here, and you can see the whole list later if you'd like to, but U M Forward, Love Prevails, reconciling ministries, Resist Harm, some of these other groups are very progressively oriented. One of the first points we wanted to make was, even though human sexuality seems to be the major driving issue behind this whole thing, it's really only the presenting issue, but we wanted to get beyond that, dispel the idea that that is the main thing, and just kind of talk our way through that a little bit before we actually start getting into some of the policy and polity issues that are really causing the major problem. Officially, according to our Book of Discipline, the United Methodist Church restricts same-sex couples from being married in a United Methodist Church, U M C clergy from presiding at same-sex ceremonies, and self-evowed practicing clergy from being ordained in the United Methodist Church. Traditionalists uphold these restrictions. Those are the rules that have been voted on and agreed upon, and, you know, it should be like any other body with rules, that you follow the existing rules, work to change them if you don't like them, but while they're in place, you follow them. Unfortunately, that's caused some of people who are not traditionalists to be very angry, and accuse traditionalists of hating LGBTQ plus persons, of doing great harm to their community, and just generally being all-around vile and nasty people. But that's not really where we're coming from. I like what Mike said here. So what do traditionalists believe about LGBTQ persons? Traditionalists, I know, and I know a lot of them, this is Mike speaking, believe that Scripture teaches that marriage is between one man and one woman. Traditionalists also agree that all individuals, including LGBTQ plus individuals, are of sacred worth, are beloved by God, are made in the image of God, should be treated with dignity and respect, and all persons, LGBTQ plus included, are welcome in our churches and would be dearly loved, and that we do not restrict anybody from attending the churches, or believing what they ought to believe, or what they want to believe, because we do believe their beliefs are between them and God, to whom they're accountable. All persons are sinners. LGBTQ plus persons are not uniquely sinful or somehow farther from the grace of God. All of us face difference in challenges. All persons need to stand in the transforming power of Christ. In other words, we all need to become more Christ-like. So to take the next steps, Pastor Scott's going to come up and start talking about the theological roots of what the real problem is.
All right, thanks, John. And so when we talk about the United Methodist Church, this is really a 54-year experiment. And one of the challenges, particularly those who come out of Methodist backgrounds, so the churches that you grew up in had historically been Methodist Episcopal or Methodist, and one of the challenges, they go, well, I've been Methodist my whole life, so I don't know how I can think about not being Methodist, which is one of the reasons, I'm sure, the Transitional Council came up with keeping the Methodist name in the Global Methodist Church. If you don't like the name with global or Methodist, and both of these, we've had people like, I don't like the name. We didn't pick the name. But you can go on the Global Methodist website and find out why that name was selected and all of that, because there is a heritage, there is some history to some of that. But what is important to remember, and I've appreciated Pastor Riley's writings through the years, is that the Methodist churches, we know it since 1968, has been different. And so the reason is because they went, we became a big tent and moved into theological pluralism. And before that, there, we, as people called Methodist, have always been doctrinal. We were, and actually, the irony to that is, the trust clause was founded by John Wesley to make sure that Methodist houses of worship would preach Methodist doctrine. And so he said, we're, we have a trust clause, we own all the Methodist houses of worship, so we can ensure only Methodist doctrine is preached from Methodist houses of worship. Now the trust clause is, we own all the property, and we could, but we don't care because there's this giant tent. And so we have the giant tent of the three sides, or the three groups, there's actually seven, you get into seven subgroups and beyond. But there are three basic groups within this big tent, conservatives or traditionalists, centrists, and you have some theological centrists that genuinely say, you know, we're trying to live in this tension, but what we're seeing play out pragmatically, the centrists that are in play are really institutionalists. And then you have progressives, which are, which historically have been called liberal, but you also have liberationists. So there's some nuances within all of that. And so when protocol separation was put together, all of those nuances came to the table to have the conversation. But when the United Methodist Church came together, there was an intentionality to set aside the doctrinal documents that guided the evangelical association and the United Brotherhood that merged to become the Evangelical United Brotherhood. That's out of the history that St. Luke's has been in, and there were doctrinal foundations. And then the Methodist doctrinal foundations, and when they came together, they said, well, we're going to call these historical documents. So they're not theological foundational, they're historical documents that guide us, but really, we're going to live in this giant tent. So you'll hear people talk about the big tent. And the problem with pluralism, pluralism works, if it can work, in to always hold it in tension. Since 1972, we've been in tension, and it's been playing out in the role of human sexuality, but that's not the issue. That's where it plays out, but it's a much deeper issue than human sexuality. And so one of the hard pieces to this is, people have been deeply hurt by making this the presenting issue and the source of the argument. But it goes much deeper, because the big tent is stretched over this, but the foundational differences with the U M C is the authority of the Bible. What do we understand the Bible to be, and how do we understand the Bible to hold sway? Is it foundational? Is it guiding? Is it just simply giving suggestions? Is it the authoritative word of God? Is it not? And so there's some of that. Then you also have the Christology. Who's the person of Jesus? Was he indeed, as we are celebrating this week, the Son of God has come to redeem all of humanity? Or was he a good teacher? Is it necessary? Did he really die? You know, so there's questions on who Jesus is across the tent. And then you also have the primary purpose of the role of the church. Is the role of the church to do what the first people called Methodist were called to do, go to the hedges and the highways to reach all those that are lost? That was the very first time in the gathering of the people called Methodist with John and Charles Wesley, that's what they said, we need to go to the highways and the hedges to reach those that are lost. But when you move into the more progressive in social justice, it's to be a part of the politics, to be part of changing society. And justice is important, but where is that emphasis in how it plays out? And so there's really theological roots in regard to Bible, Scripture, Jesus Christ, and even the whole understanding of what the church is when we look at that. Now, this is where we're going to say, well, what does, so our assumption is, most of us would say, we believe the Bible is the Word of God, we need to be able to understand it as such. So what are the progressives' beliefs? So we have some quotes from bishops, because in a little bit, you'll see why those who are in authority and what they say matter. And so these are their words. So from, in a sermon, Bishop Elaine Stanowitski, 2019, so this isn't 1970, this isn't 1980, this is 2019, current, "When it comes to the Bible, people make choices about which stories they let shape and inform their lives. And when they go searching in the Bible, some passages speak to them and others they set aside." The challenge for people like you and me is to find the good news in the Bible. When we find that, we can let the rest recede into the background. So pick the parts that you want, bring them to the front, the parts that you don't like, they just kind of go in the background. From Bishop Hesu Young, again, December 27, 2019, in a sermon, "By the leading of God's Holy Spirit, we come to know some things allowed in Scripture are no longer appropriate and valid, and that some condemnations and rules need grace-filled and loving updating." And so you get into this, we need to update. So one of the old heresies that we've seen in church history is gnosticism. Gnosticism is we've come into some new knowledge that has never been known before, and we have a new way to understand that. And so this is, in my estimation, a new gnosticism. We have this new way of looking, and that we need to update the Scriptures because we now can see it a little different. And there's some other ways to look at that. But that's what they're saying, is, you know, we just need to update these ancient words. Adam Hamilton, Adam Hamilton's was, I went to Congress School on Evangelism. Adam Hamilton has historically been a conservative traditionalist and has been moving. So he's been one of those where he's been moving, and now is, he would call himself a centrist, but really has been pushing and voting more progressive. He has since come out with a book that talks about buckets. And the real issue for the church is not homosexuality, but the Bible. In my upcoming book, Making Sense of the Bible, I suggest that there are three buckets in which the Scripture fall. The Scriptures that express God's heart and character and timeless will for his human being. So we're going to pick those out, and that's in that bucket. The middle bucket is Scriptures that express God's will in a particular time and are no longer binding. So we're deeming this section of Scripture, really for us in 2022, irrelevant, and we're going to put those into that bucket. And then the third bucket, Scriptures that never fully express the heart and character of God. So now they're saying there were parts that we would call conn-. So now they're saying, there were parts that we would call canonical in the 66 books of the canon that really shouldn't have been in there. They really never did express God's thoughts on that. And so they really never should have been in the Bible anyway. And that's how Adam Hamilton talks about the buckets in regard to that. And then Frank Schaefer, pastor at University of UMC, this is March 20, 21. As a progressive Christian minister, I welcome censoring posts on social media that qualify as hate speech. What am I, what am I supposed to do with such clear instances of prejudice in the Bible? How can I ignore them as a responsible minister, knowing the devastating results hate speech has? At the very least, we should attach censorship flags similar to those on Twitter and Facebook, but ideally, we should ban such problematic passages from the Bible altogether. So now Scripture is being deemed as hate speech, not as a Word of God, not something that God is calling us to move toward. And so that's, that's how we're seeing Scripture portrayed from those that are more progressive. Traditionalists and progressives tend toward a different understanding of love. And so what you'll hear a lot from progressives is, we just need to love. You conservative people, you are all haters, and, and we just need to focus on love. And we just need to focus on the Gospels, just Jesus's words. And what we forget is, the Gospels were definitely Jesus living out, but the Epistles, or the letters, is really how the early apostles were living out Jesus's words and teaching in the early church. And, and so those instructive things are very, letters are very, very important. But you'll see the progressives say, just focus on Jesus, His love, and how they define His love. And so what we have is, God's, and so these are some paraphrases from John Wesley's teaching on love. God's chief character trait is holy love. Holiness without love is sternness. And sometimes we, in the more conservative branch of the church, we have erred on being too stern and focusing on what not to do, and focusing on the sternness without loving people, without being caring in the context, and without being open to different ones in whatever context they may find themselves. But love without holiness, which would deem on the other side, is permissiveness. Not that God doesn't have a holiness and a standard that we're, we're called to live, that there's called the heart of change. I mean, sanctification by itself is growing enough in God's grace that our lifestyles begin to shift. And we, as John said earlier, we all have issues that the Holy Spirit is working on us within our own lifestyles. But, but it's this mixture of holy love. Now, the other dynamic you have with the United Methodist Church is, we grew up with the United States. Now, when I did a deep dive researching the early Methodists, I did the first 100 years of the revival focusing in England, and I didn't really do a lot of my research into the United States. But in the United States, the United States Methodism really grew up with our nation. And so when we look at how the Methodist Church, the United Methodist Church functions, it looks very similar to our government. And there's a reason, because they grew up together. And so we've applied that. And so part of the issue is organizational as well. And so our founding documents, the US government constitutional, the Constitution, Declaration of Independence, the Federalist Papers, the United Methodist Church, our Constitution, Articles of Religion, the Methodist Church, Confessions of Faith, the EUB Church, and the General Rules. The Judicatory is the Supreme Court, nine members, and the Judicial Council, who say whether we do or do not follow the Book of Discipline, nine members. The executive branch, President and Regulatory Departments, within the United Methodist Church, bishops or, and now they call, they're called Conference Superintendents in Indiana, District Superintendents, pastors, the Regulatory Departments. Well, you have the General Boards and Agencies, these groups that speak on and produce the official documentation of the United Methodist Church. And then you have the Legislative Branch, the Congress. And for us, that would be General Conference. And so the only group that speaks officially for the United Methodist Church is General Conference. And every four years, General Conference meets and says, what is our official stand? And it's put together in the Book of Discipline. And so I can say, here's what the church says, but I can only speak officially for the Methodist Church by quoting the Book of Discipline. Bishops can say all these things, but only, but if they speak on behalf of the church officially, only the Book of Discipline that has been selected and put together at General Conference once every four years can officially speak on behalf of the people called Methodist, the United Methodist Church. But the issue is, the, that that body now, every four years, from 1972, the first four years, all the way up, have been fighting over some of these issues. And there's been different nuances through the, through the years. And then you have a large, the next smaller group is the jurisdiction. And we're in the North Central Jurisdiction, and so that's Ohio, Indiana, Wisconsin, Michigan, I think Iowa was in there. And so that's our body, so that each, the jurisdictions are put together. And then within the jurisdiction are the annual conferences. And so we're in Indiana as a state is one annual conference. When I started ministry, there were two conferences in Indiana. When my dad was going through, there were a handful, they were all over the place. And then they've just slowly combined when we look at the annual conference. So once a year, the annual conference gets together, and we can make those decisions. But every four years, the, only General Conference can speak. And that's part of the issue that we have, is in some of these issues, the reason why the Protocol of Separation coming to General Conference in 2020 was so important, is only General Conference can say, yes, now we can amicably separate. And I think one of the important things to remember is, many people talked about schism, separation, divorce. And while there is an aspect to that, I think the other thing to think about, I think we're more in an Orange Scott moment. An Orange Scott came, he was a, he was a Methodist pastor and felt that he could not stay, and the Wesleyan Church came out of that. And so I believe we're in a mitosis situation, where, where there's a multiplying effect happening and allowing more. And many of the people that are cousins, so you have the Nazarene Church, the Wesleyan Church, and a number of other Wesleyan holiness branches, have come out of moments that we're in. So when people say, we've never had this, we can't be schismatic, that's all our history has been. And we, they're just called different denominations. And so I believe we're in that, that very important time and moment. And so the reason this is, is this my slide?
Yeah.
Okay. And, and so the root cause is really organizational, because the organizationally, you say, well, why are we having this issue? Because didn't in 2019, didn't we reaffirm yet one more time, as we have every other time since 1972, a more conservative traditionalist perspective? And that is correct, we do. So the Book of Discipline yet continues to say what we feel relatively comfortable with. The traditionalists hold sway in rulemaking functions, but the, the problem is, the progressives and centrists are in the rule enforcing functions. And so that means that people are in our agencies, people on our cabinets, most of our bishops. And there are certain litmus tests moving forward with bishops that are asking very progressive liberationist questions before they can even be elected. So the fact that we have some very conservative bishops, they're, they're aging out. But there, it's in a setting that very few people that hold a traditionalist understanding of Scripture and the church and of Jesus Christ will even be in that role. So the people that are called to enforce the Book of Discipline, which is the role of the bishop and the conference and the agencies, they're saying, we, we don't agree with it, and we're not going to enforce it. And actually, that's what happened after 2016. You remember, we said, we're going to spend three years praying and discerning and settling this once and for all. And so after three years of prayerful discernment, we said, we're going to do this, and coming together, and there were three options. One of those was, the Book of Discipline as we've known it, called the traditionalist opinion. Nobody thought that was going to win. And the reason I say that is because nobody put all the legislation together. It wasn't even completely put together that goes, well, we have enough in there, but it's really not something we have to worry about. And so after three years of prayerful consideration, coming to General Conference in 2019, that was the direction it went. It took everybody by surprise, including traditionalists. Because the Wesley Covenant Association was started in 2016 to be a life raft, because they, they reached out to Presbyterians, they reached out to Episcopalians, they reached out to Lutherans and other churches that have gone through exactly what we're going through, and they said, what do you wish you would have known? And they go, we wish we would have had a life raft, because all churches that said they couldn't stay, they left and they all became independent. And so the role of the WCA was to be a life raft, to move from here to there. And then after 2019, when we had won, from a traditionalist standpoint, there was rebellion that just rose up in Indiana. We had letters, open letters signed by some of our cabinet members, the superintendents, and actually, one of our superintendents at the time, and other superintendents, that just said, we are so sorry, this hateful thing has happened at General Conference 2019, and we won't do it. Iowa, this past jurisdictional conference, they expressed the beloved community, a vision of where the United Methodist Church will go. And Lori Haller, the bishop in Iowa, said, yeah, we're just going to start living that way, and, and you traditionalists, you can just leave, because we're tired of waiting, and, and so we're not going to wait for General Conference anymore, and we disagree with the Book of Discipline, and that's how we're going to live. And, and so we're seeing this, this absolute rebellion from the Book of Discipline. So those that are called to enforce it are not enforcing it right now. That's why it's an organizational issue. And, and since 2019, it's gotten worse. And so when people go, why is it exponentially worse if that's the tension we've lived in in 72? Because the progressives are not wanting to, they don't want to live in the big tent anymore. They want to be the tent. And, and they go, now, you can live here, but we're still playing by our rules, and, and that's, that's how it's going to be. So the big tent is not functioning anymore. And that's where the experiment with pluralism really breaks down, because it's, it's by nature, in this tension, you believe what I believe, but we're going to honor all of this, and we have the Book of Discipline, and, and the progressives, and many centrists are really moving and just going, we, we want to move in this direction, and we just need to start doing it. And, and none of the coalitions can win. So that's why Feinstein got together. Now, he was, he negotiated all of the stuff from 9/11. He, he heard what was happening with the Methodist Church, and he met with a group of people, of all the factions within the Methodist Church, the United Methodist Church, and he donated his time. He's a Jewish person, and he says, I'm going to help negotiate this, and, because nobody can win. And he said, you know you have a good negotiation when everybody walks away feeling like they lost something, equally. And, and what's happened is, as the protocol is moving forward, it's now beginning to be more and more in question. And so we are really at an impasse or a stuckness, and with real no solution. And so within that, there were, there's emerging denominations. There were three, and now there are two emerging denominations. You have the post-separation, or the continuing United Methodist Church. And, and so I got a call from the bishop a couple of weeks ago, and he had, there was an article from Keith Boyett, and he was wanting some clarification, and, and he asked propositionally, so would you agree that you understand and know what the United Methodist Church in Indiana is, but you don't know what the Global Methodist Church is? And I said, well, two years ago, this was beginning to be put in place, and so the constructs of what is now called the Global Methodist Church, which is the new theologically orthodox denomination, the, we have the ingredients for cement. So they're not written in wet cement, these are the ingredients. This will be brought to the convening conference, and we'll talk about that in just a second. And so I said, the last two years, that's been emerging. And so if you go to the Global Methodist Church website, you can look at the Transitional Book of Doctrine and Discipline and get an idea of the direction the new denomination's going to go. But it has yet to be voted on, it has yet to be determined, but you get a direction. But you also can go, I know what this annual conference has been. I was born in this annual conference, called into ministry in this annual conference, my dad served in this annual conference. I said, I can tell you what this annual conference has been up to now. But when we look at the official document coming out of the North Central Jurisdiction, using membership vows to paint a very progressive picture of where the United Methodist Church is going, we can see that's the direction. They're fighting hard and working hard to have happen. When General Conference delegates have an open letter and say, this is what we're fighting for, this is the direction, this is how we see the United Methodist. So we're standing at a moment in time, that's a snapshot, but as we look down the road in the next two years, both will be changing. And, and so you have to go, what is that direction? And so we can wait until the Global Methodist Church is firmed up, and we now know after what, General Conference 2024, but our leadership says, we begin to see some of this stuff, and it's important to come back to you now, bring you up to speed, and, and we, we're projecting, and I think we can in confidence kind of get a direction where we're going. The Liberation Methodist Connection, which is the liberationist, very progressive denomination, started, but they couldn't decide which liberationist view was most important. And so they kind of employed it because they each had their own identity theologies, and they could not, literally just could not agree, and, and it kind of dissipated. And, and so that third one does not exist any, anymore. And so with the Protocol of Separation, it did bring together theologically diverse groups. It was the best option. Everybody hated it, but there was enough that everybody walked away and it was fair. But in theory, it was good, but it hasn't been passed yet. And the closer, or the longer this goes, the support for it continues to wane. And so we could wait, but there's a high probability, especially with 200 churches that have already disaffiliated. I just heard Monday in a meeting, nine to 15 churches a day are asking for their disaffiliation numbers. Unofficially, 50 to 60 churches already are disaffiliating at this annual conference. And so those numbers begin to shift internally. There, there is a potential, if the bishop so chooses, and it's a bishop call, that there will be a special-called annual conference in the fall, for those that do not make them a one deadline. The fact that they're talking about having a special-called annual conference in the fall says that there's a volume. I mean, you don't do that just for like, hey, there's 10 churches, we may call a special called annual conference for you. There's a volume. And, and one of the words of what are our persons said, there's a panic, because the cabinet and the bishop said, it'll be 10%, maybe 15% that are going to leave. Nobody wants to leave. Everybody's okay. And since the February, end of February, beginning of March, they're, they're in shock. And so we're trying to be in a timely manner, that if we choose that we need to be out this annual conference, we have enough time, or if the congregation deems, no, we need to wait, we can do that. So protocol has been on the table. We said it's been the best option. I've told many, many people to wait. Ironically, the Wesley Covenant Association has told more churches to stay in the United Methodist Church than anybody else, because we felt the protocol for separation was the best option. The dynamics have since changed in the last six to seven weeks. And so when we move into that, the reason the Global Methodist Church chose to launch is because over 200 churches have already disaffiliated, and they're just independent churches floating out there. And so they, as a, as a metaphor, they have moved back to being a life raft in this moment, and, and then continue to help people that feel that they need to leave. And as I've shared with the bishop, and I've shared with anybody who'd listen, not everybody should stay, but also not everybody should go. They need to have enough information that they can make an informed decision. And right now, we're spending all of our time fighting instead of releasing people to do ministry. The churches going into the Global Methodist Church would do so with our own property. And so that's still a part of that. Protocol cannot be enacted without the approval of General Conference. So that's at least a two-year wait. With the delay of General Conference to 2024, the support is going to begin to wane more so than it has been. And just as a lot has happened the last two years, in the next two years, that fight is just going to get worse. And so can we wait? Can. Is there wisdom in waiting? Our council is feeling that there may not be wisdom, and so we're bringing that to you. And so when we look at what are our options, there, there's some different options at play. One came out of General Conference 2019, and as we're playing, John will walk us through those.
Thank you. Yeah, so protocols off the table. Yeah, so protocols off the table, or at least effectively off the table, what are the four things that we could consider at this point in time? Already mentioned, there is a Book of Discipline paragraph called 2553. The subject is disaffiliation, and it's basically disaffiliation based on either, we don't agree with the stance on homosexual sexuality, or we don't agree with the way that it's been Which is more, I think, the, the nature of the beast, in, in most cases. The Book of Discipline, 2548, is that comedy agreement, that right now, we're not looking, it's not looking too promising, at, at least in the Indiana Conference. There's also 2549, and that is a option to go ahead and close your church, just turn the property over to the conference, and if you really want to, you know, worship there in the future, you might want to try to buy it back, or you can start fresh someplace else. And the last one, which would be the last resort, would be, inform the conference, you're not playing UMC anymore, and, but you intend to keep your property, and then just keep operating and wait for the lawsuit. I personally don't think those last two are very Christian in their approach to how you would deal with anybody, you know, in business, or certainly not from a church perspective. The third one there, closing your church and trying to buy it back, you'll see the numbers are a very small, well, I won't say a very small fraction, but they're a fraction of what trying to go and, and buy something back on, on the market value would be. So that gets us down to the, the first one, or the second one. We'll go a little deeper into those. The disaffiliation of local churches over issues related to human sexuality was the name of 2553. The church council starts the process by voting to call for a church conference to take on the vote of disaffiliation. It's the conference superintendent then, that comes in and does the presiding over that conference. He, he sets the date and time based on a contact from the church council that requests it. And then all professing members of the church are eligible to vote. It takes two-thirds professing members voting, yes, we want to leave, in order to approve that disaffiliation. If the voting is successful, the church and the Indiana Conference develop a separation agreement, and there is a payment required. Now, actually, what we have in hand at this point in time, and I'll show you the numbers, is a draft agreement. Very little about that would change between now and, say, the 1st of June, 1st of July. Potentially, you know, there'd be a little bit of change after that, but not much. So the final step in this whole process, after church council, church conference, positive votes, is approval by the annual conference. So that means you have, as far as what's scheduled and expected, two opportunities, an annual conference in 2022, and an annual conference in 2023. The reason you only have those are because this is that agreement that we were talking about that expires in December 31st, 2023. Now, there is a possibility for some other special conferences to be called, as, as Pastor Scott alluded to, so that is possible. 2548 dot two, the comedy agreement. In that case, there would be a lot of negotiation going on, agreements signed that would involve not only the bishop, but the majority of the district superintendents, and the district board of church location and building, and the annual conference. Basically, what I've seen is, from a cost perspective, they're basically using all the costs that you would have had in 2553, and applying them to this with, with virtually no difference, except potentially a little more time to pay off the pension liability. This is something that stood in the, in the Book of Discipline for quite a while. My understanding is, the main threat here is that you're deeding over your property from the United Methodist Church to another church, such as, you know, the Church of Nazarene, or the Wesleyan Church, or something like that. So, even at the end of the day, with this one, you still haven't got your property in the event that that church also has a trust agreement. But as we go right to the bottom of the page there, unfortunately, this option is not now available, may never be available. One of the reasons it's not now available is because, at least in terms of the Global Methodist Church, that is not an entity that exists yet to be able to work with. What our bishop has told us is, we have no intention of bending over backwards to make this work for you. But like I said, they are giving us good cooperation on 2553. So what are the 2553 costs and components, and, and what do they look like for St. Luke's? So we have four major cost elements that would apply to us. There are a couple others that are out there that could potentially apply to other churches, but these are the ones that apply to us. We had a small unpaid apportionment from our prior 12-month period. They expect that to be taken care of. We think that very well may be a checks crossing in the mail kind of a thing, because we have been keeping up with our apportionments recently. They also want the next 12 months of apportionments. And remember, this is, this is coming at about a 12% of your receipts kind of a level. And I'm not exactly sure the exact formula that they used, but this is, this West Path developed and, and told the conference that that's what St. Luke's number would be, 48,500. The biggest chunk, obviously, and this goes all the way back to pre-1982 pension plans that were the defined benefit type of pension plan. And the United Methodist Church isn't the only people that are in this kind of mode, but there's, there's unpaid pension obligations that's being carried by the United Methodist Church, and they have a prorata way of attributing that back, or distributing that back to anybody that wants to leave. In other words, they're going to carry it on the books, but your portion, we'd like to see it paid upfront, if you're going to leave. And so that $232,400 is, obviously, the biggest, biggest chunk here. Similar to that, there's also an annual conference obligation for retiree health insurance that's also distributed out on a prorated basis, and that's another $44,000. So you put it all together, it's close to $330,000 that would be our exit cost if we decide to leave the United Methodist Church. Now Scott's going to take you into the Global Methodist Church, and, and learning more about that. And I know there are probably going to be a lot of questions about what we just covered. We'll let that percolate till the end, if you're, if you're still all right with that. And, let's go ahead and talk about the things that we want out of a church, that the Global Methodist Church is looking for, and some of the things that we didn't care for so much anyway, that the Global Methodist Church is looking to not do.
All right, thanks, John. So just, just for, one of the things we've learned, as we've talked about some of the sticker shock, one of the things that's important to remember, this is money we owe regardless. And so, and, and it's also money we're paying regardless. So this isn't like new, new debt. So the apportionments, we're already paying apportionments. And, and so whether we stay or go, we're going to pay it. The debt of the unfunded pension obligation and health insurance, we already pay, we just feel it differently. And, and so we're feeling it as it dispersed across, and not asked for us to spend at this moment. But since we're choosing to leave, that's why we feel our debt. But this has been our debt anyway, we just have not felt about it, we've never talked much. I mean, you go to annual conference, there's talk about that. So, so that's the important thing. The other piece that our finance team, so Ron DeManda's our finance chair, Ginger Phillips is our treasurer, they've been living in the numbers, because we're looking at getting a United Methodist Foundation, which, the United Methodist Foundation is an independent organization, and they have created a new loan that is a disaffiliation loan, which is basically mortgage on the property, because now we would own our property, and I'll share that in just a moment. And, and so one of the things that they've just, as they've been living in the numbers, we're already making payments here, because we're already paying our apportionment, we're already making those payments. And if, depending on the number of your mortgage, we would just make that same payment. So we feel that, that, that it's a workable figure. I know that's going to be like, when you see those numbers, like, how in the world can we do that? So I just want to take a moment and go, as they've lived in it, because we're making this payment here, we can then take that and begin to pay, and still reach all of our obligation with that. But these are, the one thing that they're not doing is charging us for our property. Some other conferences are charging for property. Our own Frank Beard, who is a superintendent here, he's actually a traditionalist. In the Great River, Illinois, they're charging 50% asset on top of the cost. I mean, assets, so that's property and any money you have. You go to Baltimore, Washington, it's 50% of property. If you go to a couple other conferences, it's 30%. Iowa, ironically, is being as gracious as Indiana, but they just want the traditionalists to leave in Iowa. So, so when we look at these numbers, and John says Indiana is actually being very gracious, it doesn't feel, when you see a number like that, but they're already our numbers that we got to pay, that are ours anyway, and that's all they're asking for. They're not asking us for, for property. They're, they're letting us go with our own property. And so the Transitional Council will be the body that will be guiding the, the Global Methodist Church until there's a convening conference in 23, 2023 or 2024. And they launch May 1st because all of these churches have disaffiliated, and they've moved back into the life raft mode. And so that's why in March, they just said, we, there, there's just so much tension, we cannot wait anymore. There are churches that cannot wait, we need to be there for them. Now, not everybody has to go. So May 1 is a starting time, and there's no end when people can make the transition and join the Global Methodist Church. They're wanting to wait till 2023 to 2024, to have a convening conference, which is when we take the elements of cement, the Transitional Book of Doctrine and Discipline, the writings that actually many of us in the Wesley Covenant Association over the last few years have been creating, we're now coming to the convening conference with documents. Because you got to have something to poke at, something to agree, something to disagree. And that's really been the heavy lifting of the midwifing of the new denomination that the Wesley Covenant Association have done. And we've had different task forces that have been living in some of those pieces. And they want as many people who are going to be a part of the new denomination to have a say in what that new denomination is going to be like. So they're, they're, they're waiting for that group of people, as many to make that transition, so that when we do have a convening conference, as many people who are going to live in it will have a say as it's being created. And so that's why the tension and, and the wait. There's no limit, and each church joins on a timetable that's best for them. And, and they're also saying that when it, and so some of the pieces that we'll see with the Global Methodist Church, why, why should we join? And so we believe that, as did the first five years of the people in this congregation, they, we were independent for the first five years of our existence, and they said, we really need to join ourselves with the denomination, so that we've got a, a way to bring pastors in, so that we've got an organization that we can join and be a part of. And, and so we're, we as a leadership feel that joining the Global Methodist Church is, is a good first step. Because it's decidedly Methodist Wesleyan. It feels familiar, it will feel a lot like what we've had, with the good parts of, of what we've had. The, here's the other part of that is, if we are in for five years, and we go, we don't like it, we can leave. And so we feel that it's better to join, live in it, and then if we don't like it, independent is always an option, but historically, for this congregation, we have felt that independent was not the best choice for us. There's an expansive clergy deployment system aimed at giving jobs, and, and so it's a relatively agreement about these, changing in these conditions. So the, the, keeping the congregations in the fold by holding their property at ransom, the trust clause, that's, that's going to go away. Crippling administrative overhead, where the, the larger church says, here's how much it's going to cost, and now I'm going to charge each of you for it, that's what's happening in the currently. So that's going to, that's what's not working well now. Local churches are viewed as funding units for the denomination, here's your part. And bishops are elected with, for life without administrative accountability. And so right now, bishops whose role is to guard the Book of Discipline and protect each other to do that, right now, we're not enforcing it. So when Karen Elavito was, as, as an open practicing homosexual, was elected, the bishops said, hey, you need to look into this and do that, and they go, yeah, we're not going to do it. So right now, that, we believe the Global Methodist Church will begin to fix that. And so we're looking at something with some of the current emphases, and the previous list was, so they're fixing those issues that we just talked about. And there's an emphasis on church planting. One of the task forces is multiplication, and, and so when we look at, we're looking at how do we create new faith communities? Both Pastor Brian and I have been participating in Multipliers Learning Community this past year, with a multiplication task force, that is looking at, how do we multiply? How do we reach new faith communities? How do we plant churches? Not just in the, what's called the parachute drop, but also how do we birth and reach new faith communities? Which has been the conversation we've been having here in Kokomo for the last two years. A strong missional partnership model, and historically, within the churches that have been a part in our connection, and, and even with St. Luke's, strong missional partnership. And so we want to continue to partner with those doing mission to, to reach new souls. There's a better catechesis, and that's just a fancy way of saying, a better way to teach our faith. And so with Riley, Riley has made sure, as well as others in the Good News Movement, that we have a solid catechesis. But as a denomination, the United Methodist Church is not. And so you get Cokesbury stuff, you get other things, and we've not had solid way of teaching faith, not only to our youth, but to our adults. And so there's a strong discipleship component, but there's also a strong, here's a way to teach, understand, and live out your faith. And then renewal in the areas of prayer, worship, and the sacraments, as well as focus on young adults and community of colors. If you go to the Transitional Leadership Council, you'll notice the intentional makeup of age, color, of hue, of skin, nationality, and, and so they're, they're very, very intentional about who's making up the Transitional Leadership Council, and moving forward that it is representative of our nation, of our world. It's global, to start with, because Bulgaria, the whole annual conference in Bulgaria said, yeah, we're joining. So even before any US churches have officially done that, it, it's, it's starting globally. And so the reason that we're global is in there is that they're intentionally saying, we're not just a United States-centric denomination. Because that's the desire of the ongoing United Methodist Church, is to become a regional church, and only the US can make decisions for US. And then we'll let the African problem go away, which is really kind of colonialist and racist. But, but you guys over there, you do whatever you want, you, you can do. And the thing is, we would say, from a traditionalist standpoint, we are so grateful for our brothers and sisters across the world that have kept us Orthodox. And, and, but there is a push to create a regional plan, so only the United States, United Methodist, decide. And, and so that's really the focus of the Global Methodist. Now here are some things that, that Mike says, but it's also based on, he says it's his opinion, but it's- his opinion, but it's based on data that we have been living in as we look at the emerging Global Methodist Church. Very little bureaucracy, so there's low overhead cost. And, and so when we talk about apportionment, which Keith Boyett says, the word apportionment will never be allowed to be spoken in the Global Methodist Church, it's connectional giving. And it's on an honor system. So it's not a bill system, it's an honor system. In the first couple of years, they said, we know you're buying your way out, we don't expect you to give. We'll, we'll take, we'll take anything that you can give, but, but we understand in this season, and we're gonna live with whatever we have. So whatever money we have, we're gonna live within our means. And it'll be about six, six to seven percent of, of each church's annual income. So we're going to experience half of connectional dollars leaving the church. So more money stays in the local church. There's no trust clause. So congregations, we'll own our own property. With protocol, the property would have gone from the United Methodist Church to the Global Methodist Church, and the Global Methodist Church would have said, and here's your property. Now with disaffiliation, we'll be independent and join, and they go, yeah, you, you still keep your property. Churches will have more control over pastoral appointments. It'll still be an appointive system because one of my former district superintendents said, there's still human sin alive and well in the church. And most churches, if given a choice, they'll take a young, white, male, family pastor to their church because they think that that's the ideal. And, and there, that's may not even be the best pastor, period, let alone the best pastor for them. And, and so they feel that we will still have an appointment system, but the church will have a lot more control over it. And so the churches still will profile, here's what we need in a pastor, and there will still be a selection process. But instead of this married at first sight model where, when you walk in, this is who you're stuck with unless you can give me a convincing reason you, you can't stay married, what they're moving toward is much more conversational, and, and actually there's probably gonna be a pool, and, and there are actually, so women, clergy, clergy of color and other nationalities that are serving amazingly well when churches, based on issues that have nothing to do with whether they can serve or not, factor in. So the appointment system's still gonna be solid, but churches will have a much more say in that process. Now here's the other thing, and you'll never hear me say this, and I think it's horrible when pastors say this, when they go, I've been appointed yet one more time. And everybody's like, what? I didn't know that was a choice. It's like, well, we are Methodist, we know that we're up for grabs every year. I think it's horrible because it just causes disruption. It's like, what? You could leave? Well, why would I get attached to you if you're gonna only be here this next year? Well, I've been here for two, but, so the beauty of it is, you're appointed. And, and so my philosophy is, I'm here till I'm not here. And, and, and so there's no reason to talk about, I'm here or I could be gone. Why would you do that? But you only raises anxiety. Well, the official stand is, you're there till you're not there. And so you still can leave because if your abilities are needed somewhere else, and that is part of the conversation, but there, it's, it's only when you get asked, hey, there's this opening, and that's part of the conversation, or a local congregation says, we believe it's time for pastoral transition. So the churches, as we currently experience it, that part of the conversational model still is there, but every year, starting from January to June, putting pastors and churches in anxiety is, is not gonna be there. You're there, do ministry, and tell you're not there. And it's a conversation, and churches will have a lot more say in that appointment process. Bishops will be limited in power, and their accountability will be assured. And actually, they will have terms, they'll be elected for two terms out of the local church, and they'll go back to the local church. And doc, actually presiding elders or superintendents will, right now the working is that they will be serving a church as well as serving as a supervisory pastor. So to have this disconnect of the legislative branch, the disconnect of the people working for the conference and being disconnected from the local church, it's really built in that those who are leading from the larger administrative role are, stay, still very well connected as, and in, within the local Methodist Church. And doctrines and practices will be grounded in Orthodox historical Christianity. And, and so that's one of the beauty, beautiful pieces of that. Now, and when you look at, well, what will the future United Methodist Church look like? Now, what we've seen is it's slowly been progressing to the left since 1968. This is, this is Scott's opinion. Within the next two years, and I believe it will begin to happen after this annual conference, it will not be slowly creeping to the left. I, I believe it'll lurch. It, it's just gonna lurch to the left. And, and we have a large percentage of churches that are, are still in an unaware. They, they don't even have any idea this is happening in, in the big picture. And, and they're gonna be shocked when jurisdictions are driving the progressive agenda, and, and it's like, wait, what? What happened to my, my church? And that's why we have worked to err, and I've been grateful that historically in this congregation, we have erred in communicating the, the issues. But moving forward, there, it'll look very, very different than it does now. So when, when we say, we've always been Methodist is not fair because, one, we stopped that in 1968, and actually even before that in the 30s, was, was already a move toward that. But moving forward, we're gonna see a regional plan that they've already said, this is what we're pushing. That was one of the plans that was at the 2019 General Conference, and they're saying, we want the one church plan, we want it regionalized so that the United Methodist Church in the United States, we can have our own progressive agenda, let the Africans do what they wanna do, let everybody else do what they wanna do, but we wanna do what we wanna do. So the regionalization is, is, if it doesn't happen this next jurisdictional conference, it will begin to happen because they're already pushing, and they've already said from the beloved community report, the open letter from our delegates that are progressive, that's, that's where they see it moving. Reductions in income will continue to drive reductions in staff and agencies. We have 10 districts and seven district superintendents already. So we, we cannot afford what we currently have right now, and that's only gonna get worse. Positions on human sexuality, abortion, social principles, et cetera, will be changed. And we know that because that's what the progressives are saying, we will be changing these. And sermon topics, words to hymns, liturgies will change over time. And, and that was one of the pieces that was kind of interesting, is that we've experienced that in, in the mid 80s, as Riley worked hard to keep orthodoxy within our hymnody and fighting some of those pieces. And so if that was happening in the 80s, how much more so moving forward are we going to see that in 2022 and beyond? And, and so liturgies, when they're praying to, you know, Mother God and some of the other pieces, that will seem odd for those of us of a more traditionalist perspective, those official liturgies will be, begin to do, begin to change. Doctrine and practices will become more divergent, theological pluralism will continue to expand. And if you don't believe that, look at what's happened with the Presbyterian Church USA. Look at the Episcopal, look at the ELCA Lutheran. Just about a year ago, it was a bishop that, and he, he said, the official stand of the church is, if you don't wanna marry homosexuals and have homosexual marriage in your church, you don't have to. And so that's what's being said right now. If the Methodist changes, you don't have to do that. Well, here's a bishop that said, yes, that's our official stand. And that bishop, I believe is an Episcopal bishop, lost his job. And they go, no, that's not how it goes. You need to enforce that all churches will do same-sex weddings, all clergy will perform. And so what we see is, within a 10-year process, that, you know, you don't have to, it just continues, oops, sorry, it just continues to expand progressively. And, and so that's why we're going, we're watching these other denominations and what's happened, and so we believe we can make some informed observations on the trajectory. So the United Methodist Church has stunned everybody that up to even 2019, the official vote and stand of the church is still traditional and Orthodox. It, it's crazy, but it's also been because we're a global church, and our brothers and sisters in other parts of the world hold us and have held us accountable. And so the US-centric church would have already decided to do that. And so those are some of the shifts that we see happening with the United Methodist Church. So what are some of the decisions we need to make? And that's why we're bringing this to you, to make these decisions in a timely manner. If we act to disaffiliate in 2022, we need to seek this, or do we, at what, what exit point do we need to do that? Or do we wait till general conference? How will we pay for it? So we've already said, we believe taking out a mortgage through the Methodist Foundation is a reasonable option, and we believe it's a doable option based on the last two weeks of doing a deep dive into, into our accounting. But that's, that would be our methodology to pay for it. Will we act independently, or will we seek alignment? We believe the best option is to start aligning with the Global Methodist Church. If we find that it's not sustainable, we don't like it, we can always circle back around and go, this isn't what we thought, we already own our property. And actually Keith Boyett said, do it, and if you don't like it, then, then leave at that point. So even the organizational creator and, and the head of the, the organizing team says, if, if you don't like it, you can leave down the road. We wanna continue to keep you informed, and so because of the timeframes, we wanted to make sure to do that. And so this is really preparing you to, to, to go. And so John's gonna kind of walk through as our Leadership Council has, has looked, we've, we've been going, okay, we, we, we're seeing some of this, we've been living in some of this, now we're bringing it to you as a congregation to get your wisdom, to get your discernment. So as we, because we're gonna be tomorrow night, take the data from the straw poll and, and move forward. So John's gonna walk us through the pro and con.
It's great to have that kind of depth, to be able to speak to these issues, isn't it? So, yeah, this is not anything that's considered to be complete or, or the only reasons, but I pulled together a few key decisions that, and I think it's the right way to approach the questions. One at a time as binary issues, in other words, yes or no type decisions, as we walk through this process. And so when we get into the straw poll, there's going to be a question about, do we stay with UMC or not? There's another option for questions and things like that. And then the questions end up being, if we leave the UMC, are we gonna do it earlier or later? That's actually broken down a little bit differently in this straw poll, but the same basic questions. And if we leave the UMC, do we wanna join the Global Methodist Church? So this is just a little quick chart of what I think are some of the key decisions with the pros and the cons there. And so let's go back with the, do we wanna leave the United Methodist Church? I believe things supporting that are, we would want to leave, many of us, because we're seeing them diverge, the United Methodist Church diverging from Scripture. We're not seeing a chance of resolution of this conflict. It's, it's something that's going to come to a head, and it's going to end up with some staying and some losing, some, some leaving, I think. But that's the, that's the nature of the conflict we're in. Members of the present church and others that could potentially come into our church are interested in associating with a denomination that's getting farther and farther away from, from Scripture, and a denomination that's in this throes of conflict that we've been in for years. Another thing that's kind of big in some of the things that the, the councils talked about in the past, do we want our contributions going to support the causes that we don't agree with? So those all being reasons to leave, and, and the last one there, peace is, could be peace of mind, peace in the congregation, peace in the, peace in the denomination, however you wanna interpret that. But there is, there is a peace that comes with resolution of the conflicts we've been involved with. Why would we not want to leave? Well, for one thing, this is familiar to us, it's, many of us have our family histories and our past histories associated with, you know, some of these buildings and some of these churches, and, and, you know, we know what's in the, the hymnal, and we know a lot about the United Methodist denomination. Of course, what we don't know, as we've been saying, is what it looks like going forward, and that looks like it's gonna be drastically different. Why else might we not want to leave? Well, maybe, maybe the costs are impediment in some people's minds. And not only are there the costs that you've seen, potentially there are some rebranding costs and things like that because we would not be actively wanting to use the, the cross and flame symbology. Kind of turns out is, in this part of the, the county anyway, the, the, the city has decided that road signs have to be lower than eight feet tall and meet certain standards, and that all has to go into place fairly shortly anyway. So we already had some rebranding and re-signage and things like that we were going to have to do. So that might be a very minimal additional cost, but, you know, maybe you look at it in the perspective of the cost to leave, plus we got these other things coming up. So there, there are things out there that I can see why, you know, there might be decisions not to leave. So if we leave, earlier versus later? Why would we wanna go earlier? Well, we know today's situation, we know what the costs are, we've got a bishop and a council that are working with us now. There's, there's talk and certainly a potential that by the end of 2022, there's going to be some bishop elections and changes. It may, may not happen, we don't know, but there's certainly discussion about that. If that happened, we could be in a completely different cost situation. And protocol, as we've discussed a couple of times, is totally up in the air. We don't know if it's going to be adopted in 2024, or it's not even going to be available at all. So to leave earlier rather than later, those are some reasons to support that. To leave later rather than earlier, the reasons would be, maybe you believe the protocol's gonna get in place in, at the General Conference in 2024. And maybe you believe that the annual conference itself is going to leave the United Methodist Church, which is also one of the things that there's provision for out there. I have to think the latter is probably less than a 1% chance. So let's move on to the next one. Why would you join the Global Methodist Church? I think one of the key reasons is found right there in James 124, 127, where it says, religion that is pleasing to God is religion that takes care of orphans and widows and is not polluted by the world around it. So there's kind of a statement built into that one, but I think from what I'm seeing about the Global Methodist Church, there's every effort not to be polluted by the world around it as opposed to the alternative. The belief systems are scriptural, that gets a lot of us back into our comfort zones and away from where we've been with the conflicts. The policies and the costs that we've heard discussed all sound very favorable to me. And the focus on things like discipleship, where, where the statement was, you know, getting back to prayer and worship and, and some of those things as air, focus areas, sacraments, and focus on evangelism, that strong missional partnership model, church planning, as well as better training in the faith, all those things are, are very attractive to me, and I would say that those are supportive of joining the Global Methodist Church. Couple of things that may want you to look at it differently, maybe you would prefer independence as a church. That's an alternative. That's an alternative. Maybe you prefer some other organization to become combined with. So those are just a couple of things that we jotted down. I think they're some of the very keys when it comes to what's going on. We did want to mention, how do you keep updated on an ongoing basis? There is just so much information out there. And Pastor Mike mentioned this website, peopleneedjesus.net. And within that is this United Methodist Fallout Compendium, which has articles on both sides of the issue. You know, why the United Methodist Church ought to be changing, and what's wrong with the way that the United Methodist Church is changing. So there's a lot of information there. We're not saying there's only one source out in the world, but that's a place that's trying very hard to, I think, pull a lot of it together in one place. As far as from the Global Methodist Church perspective, you can go right out on their website at globalmethodist.org. And in addition to a lot of quick read brochures and things like that that kind of lay out things really quickly, there's the whole Transitional Book of Doctrine and Discipline that you can look at and review if you're interested in digging into the details of it. So just wanting to come back around and check, did we adequately go through what these recent changes are? That you understand why we're in the situation we're in? And if we're all good with those items that are documented there, then we're just going to throw it open to general questions and answers before we pass out the ballots and go ahead and do our straw poll.
How's the connection we're put together with Grace and Par? How's that going to be affected by this breakout? Because if we move out and what I'm doing, now we're losing all effort we had putting together last year.
Well, I can try that from a couple of perspectives. One is, individual churches are going to have to make these decisions. And, you know, so we're not attempting to make any other churches' decisions for them. And they'll have to have their own discussions, I think, and their own decision-making process. And the other piece is, there's nothing about being a cooperative parish that says you absolutely have to both be in the exact same United Methodist denomination. I don't think you even have to be Methodist to be in a cooperative parish with other United Methodist denominations.
Yeah, so the United Methodist Book of Discipline says that. And in the new book of Transitional Doctrine and Discipline, there's a cooperative parish. And so that's the beauty of it, is you don't have to be in the same denomination. And we also believe there's some strategic pieces that if we're one of the early ones, Jim, Pastor Jim Ritchie, when he was a goldsmith, they would be doing service during the week with meals and different things. And they go, hey, you come to our meals, why don't you come to our church? And they go, well, you're United Methodist. And we see what's going on with the Methodist Church. And we can't come, they didn't feel comfortable coming to a United Methodist Church. And so we're already seeing this in this area, and some of you have had some of those conversations. Moving forward, as we look at the Methodist Church leave, one of the things that we get to be is a potential safe place. Because if people feel like they cannot stay in the United Methodist Church, and we're still a United Methodist Church, they're going to continue to walk by us. We're not an option, we're one they're leaving. But if we were to be a part of the new denomination, we're still Wesleyan, we're still Methodist, we still have that option. But if they leave, they don't have to go independent, which is where most, when they leave a Methodist church, that's where they go, or they go Baptist. And so we believe that there's some strategy, that if we feel that we cannot stay, there's some wisdom then to be an early landing spot for those who, and transfer growth is not what we're called to do. But I believe at that point, we're going to be a safe place, which has been what? The whole conversation about how do we partner together and to live in those tensions? Actually, with Brian and I, that was day two conversation as we've done that. So we feel like it still keeps us. And then if all decide to go, or not all, we can still focus on doing ministry.
Yeah, it's an excellent question, thank you very much for that question. Others?
Yeah, you mentioned the big exit that's been happening. The churches that are leaving, how are they leaving and where are they going? And like just the majority are a high-level approach.
I think the quick answer is 2553, because that's the only way out. And they're independent for the most part, but I'll let Pastor speak into that further.
Yeah, and that's really why the Methodist, nationwide, that's why the Global Methodist Church said, we've got to launch, because people are leaving. We're seeing large churches, so we're seeing some of our larger Methodist churches across the nation joining with the Free Methodist Church. And so for the larger the church, the more dynamic, the smaller the church, you'd have these conversations, and it's like, it's just us. When you start getting into the very large or megatype churches, Shane Bishop in Illinois was just north of St. Louis, and he was one of the first to disaffiliate, because the fallout from General Conference was so hard, he lost 400 people in one weekend. And so a lot of the larger churches are just going, we've just got to leave now, because being United Methodist, we're being painted with this brush and we cannot stay. The smaller churches, some of them, and Riley was a former BS, some of them didn't want to be Methodist, and they've never been Methodist except by name. And so some are just like, hey, this is a chance to leave. And they're happy to be independent. Others are like, we can't stay, but we don't know where. So we see some returning, but that's the problem right now, is there's this fracturing that the protocol would have at least been an amicable separation, so people could lay in. And right now, they're just starting to fracture. And so that's why there's this move to go. And we said, we need to bring this back to the congregation and go, where are we in the middle of that? Where do we feel like we need to be? Yeah, and the other thing to remember, Bishop said last week, the rubrics of 2553 are the rubrics of going, no matter what, are we? And so when we go, well, is there a better option? It's 2548.2. If that's an option between sundown and General Conference, the basic rubrics of 2553 are going to be a play.
Yeah.
A portionments pension. Now, we don't know after General Conference, sorry, after Annual Conference. And we have this bishop, and we don't know what some of the progressives are going to do. Would they say they want to play nice, but they could begin to put some pieces in at the Annual Conference? This bishop, if he does get forced to retirement, he wants to retire 2024. But if he gets caught in the plan right now to get away, to get out a conservative bishop, Scott Jones, they're wanting to get Scott Jones out, and he turns 68 this June. Well, our bishop's birthday is June. And so our bishop may get caught in the maelstrom. And so what's interesting is Bishop Trimble's the most liberal bishop we've had in Indiana. Moving forward, he'll be the most conservative bishop we'll ever have. And so it's just the dynamics that, it's a weird, weird dynamic that we're in right now. And so we're trying to be very, very careful to paint you a realistic picture, so that you can make an informed decision and not put some of our emotion. I mean, obviously, there's a bias, but again, we're listening to you as the congregation. Any other questions?
I just wondered if you could flip the previous screen, that last screen.
Oh, that one?
Yeah.
The, did we explain? Yeah, this was a slide from before, and we're the recent changes from February of 2022.
And if you want us to send you a slideshow or a PDF of that?
Yeah, that's true, too.
Yeah, but I just, I was wondering, I keep flipping to the left.
Oh, okay. Well, I saw some of you have been taking pictures of the screens to capture them, so. You able to get it this time?
Yes.
Okay, good, good. Sorry about that.
So one of the things we had said earlier, Jenny reminded me. So the bishops, so the General Conference has been delayed. And the public answer is because our delegates couldn't get visas and COVID. And so that's why they said, oh, we'd really like to have it, but we can't. Well, the problem is, the letters to invite the global delegates to General Conference never went out. And that's the starting of the visa process. So going into May of 2020, those letters could have been sent out, and that process could have been happening over the last two years.
Yeah.
So the initial letter inviting the delegates to come was never sent. So when they say, the process to get a visa is going to be a challenge, well, it's a challenge because step one never happened from the people inviting our delegates. And so there's some disingenuousness. The other thing is, the AME Church and some other denominations, that are global denominations, have met in person. And we actually, the Wesley Covenant Association was actually paying for anybody, regardless of their theological perspective, we were paying for vaccinations. If vaccination is an issue, we will buy you. And the United Methodist Church was invited into that process. The progressives were invited in that process. And they said, you colonialists, how dare you treat them that way? It's like, we're paying for a vaccine that is necessary for them to travel. And so when the WCA was working hard and asking the partners, it's like, this is not a WCA thing. You said this is a barrier, how do we make this barrier go away? So when they say that, there's a reason, and it's the institutionalists that are pushing General Conference 2024. And we know that because one of our delegate, one of the members of the commission left, and on his way out, he said, I need to tell you why I'm stepping out. This is what's happening, it's a flawed system, this is what happened behind the scenes, that is confidential. And that's an article if you're interested in reading that. So some of this stuff, I would love to be able to say and love to be able to believe everything. And so we're going with as much information as we have and trying to make an informed decision. But, you know, pieces are moving, and we want to be able to trust where we can. Did I cover everything? Thank you for remembering that for me. Anybody else have any other questions?
Not a question, but a comment about, in answer to Paul. We've had, well, first of all, it's very interesting in the history of St. Luke's. This was once, this church grew out of a great revival in 1884. And when it got started, it was independent. And it got independent for 10 or 12 years. And finally, they said, we've got to belong somewhere. And that's when the whole, and it was a big church, big church. And so they said, let's find the best denomination there is. And they decided the United Brethren was the best denomination. Okay, well, churches that have left, Granger was the biggest church in the whole jurisdiction. Five, one time 5,000 in attendance, they just went independent. McGrawsville locally is gone, and they're probably independent, but they, who knows? They could come back in. Bennett Switch left, they bought back their property. Amboy left. What I'm kind of curious about is, what are the other sister churches in Howard County thinking? And in Cass County and in, say, Grant County? I've known these churches. I don't think there are very many in Grant County that are going to stay United Methodist. I think they're going to be leaving. I would think that most in Cass County are going to be leaving. And I would think that most even in Howard County, or, I mean, that's just an opinion. Unless they get scared off by the cost. And I do want to tell a story about that one thing about, there's a cost for retired ministers' health benefits. That would, I benefit from that, because I've been retired for a long, long time, and I've been a minister for a long, long time. At one time, the conference, to encourage preachers, said, we're going to support you for life. You're going to have healthcare for life. Well, that would, we'd all be broke by now if they hadn't changed that. And so a few years ago, they said, this is really ridiculous, we're not going to support. And so the newly-retired, by the time Scott gets there, he'll have no health benefits in retirement. But guys like me, who got promised, we don't get it fully, but we get a subsidy. And I, just this week, I found out what my subsidy was, I know exactly. My wife gets $1,400 a year, I get $1,400 a year. And I was getting checks, I didn't even know what they were for, it was, I cashed them. Well, I'm not going to ask too many questions because. And then I called up, and I found out that that was my subsidy, and it was to be used for emergency kind of health costs that my insurance didn't cover. Okay, but you see, if we together got $2,800 a year, Greentown went through that same thing, their costs for leaving are going to be, I know, 300. What's our cost here, 300? Well, they're 100 and some, but I said, look, you pay me. In seven years, what you're paying in, the conference would be paying, if you follow that, but, oh, that's all.
I know you had a meeting this afternoon, too, and then this one. Is the rest of the congregation going to have an opportunity to fill one of these out for? Or if you snooze, you lose, or?
Yeah, so the simple answer is, this is straw poll, so that the council can make an informed decision. The vote that matters, so this straw poll, the simple answer is, these three meetings will help the church council make an informed decision. So we're not worried about deep science, we're just trying to get an idea. Where deep science matters is, looking at these figures, the church council meets tomorrow. And if they decide, we need to ask for a church conference before May 1, so that we can be out by this annual conference, that church conference, we want to make sure we can announce this Sunday, and the next Sunday, and have at least 10 days' public official announcements to make a church conference vote notable. That is when we will have to, that's when everything is binding, and we'll work to get as many people here, because that's the vote that matters. This just lets us know what's the feel of the congregation. And I think this has been pretty fair, looking from Sunday this afternoon and this evening, to get a sense for who this congregation is. One of the options, when we did the connection church conference vote that we have made available, that's still available, is if people say, I can't make it, I'm not back in Florida yet. Or, hey, I just can't, but I want to vote. Zoom will be an option that's allowed. So it's not just get people in a room. And that's why we had three of these, because we wanted to get an honest feel, wanted to give the information, but also to go, is this, this is such an important decision that we felt like we needed to give as much opportunity to get the data. And then if, I mean, if we decide that that's, then John will make the request as church council chair, to get a date, and we have been told by the bishop, May 1 is the deadline for this annual conference. So it feels fast, and it is fast. But what we're trying to do is due diligence to just get the read of the conference.
Did you have good turnout for all three sessions?
We had a pretty decent, I think we had, I'm trying to remember what the numbers were. Julie said about 60, 50, 60, right close to that. So I think it'll be a good, I think it's a good cross-section and a good way to inform our council who's meeting.
Great, thank you.
Thanks for your question. And I don't know how fast Bruce is going to get them up to.
Oh, yes.
On the.
We recorded all three, and then whatever the best model, whatever the best video, just to, because we believe it's good information, so. And we'll probably end up doing a Q and A for just fine-tuning details.
Yeah, I think most people have seen the questions. There are some pieces of information there on the non-binding straw polls, some of them are optional. We would like to know your home church, because we want to make sure that we're, you know. you know, getting the, getting the voting in the right bucket. The questions we defined, should we disaffiliate? If we disaffiliate, when? If we disaffiliate, should we join GMC or other? And, uh, we're also asking, I would consider myself centrist, progressive or traditionalist, just to, uh, you know, keep, keep that real. And, uh, there is room to record your questions and concerns. If you've got something further you'd like to ask, we'd like to make sure that, uh, we can get that captured and get that communicated back to everybody. And also a place for your name, but the name is optional. And so that's what that's all about. And, uh, are there any other questions about the straw poll or anything else? Everybody, anybody need a pen? I forgot to ask that.
Remember bring a basket in this way.
Okay.
Offering basket in the back, um, as you're walking out aligned with the, the beam, feel free to just drop it in there and then we'll have Julie compile all of that.
Okay. Well, if we're, uh, if we're all done for the evening, then I'd like to close this out with a prayer. Heavenly Father, we thank you that, that you're a God that values order, that, that values honesty, that values honest discussion and, and conflict resolutions and at the end of the day, a, a level of unity that, uh, emulates what goes on between you and, and Jesus and the Holy Spirit. And Lord, we want to move closer and closer to you with, with every step we take. And, and so we're looking for that harmony, we're looking for that unity. We're looking for that period of time that, uh, we can be beyond major conflicts and, and into a, uh, into a time of, of growth and expansion of your kingdom. And we just, we just ask for your blessing as we seek these things and we thank you for the information and for the sharing and for the questions and for the processing that everybody's gone through. And, uh, just help us as, help us and guide us as we try to, uh, follow you more closely in Jesus' name. Amen.